This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. So, good evening and welcome to welcome to the Selectman meeting of January 4th, 2024. We could all stand and say the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the first thing we have is our approval of our minutes. We'll start with Thursday, December 28th. I think everybody has a copy of those. Go ahead, Paul.
I did. I did send an email to the board saying that there was an oversight. We have four minutes to approve tonight.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moved that we accept the minutes of December 28th as presented.
Ruggles, second. We have a motion as second. Any comments?
Yes. You're on the 28th, right?
Yes.
Okay, under other business. Last, well, almost last sentence, the violation, has a fine. She feels that as a selectman she could send a letter to the resident and their betters to be sure the right person gets notified. It's not exactly what I said. My purpose in bringing it up to the board was to look at our current ordinance. What is it, 910, the trash collection ordinance? And then I suggested that we think of making changes to it. And then on page two, it was on to our fifth paragraph, Selectman Jessman. I don't think that's how we spell Brittany.
That is how we spell her.
Hers.
There's no I between the T and the N?
No, Brittany.
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure. That's why I said I don't think.
Yeah, yeah. Somebody must have looked it up because it is a difference.
It's very different. It's cool though.
Yeah.
As long as we get it right.
Yep.
She is a loss.
Yep.
Different things down there.
Well, I would amend my motion to include the words as amended.
Second. The motion and a second to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved? The next one is Thursday, December 21st, 2023.
Three of three. Under other business, it said that I thanked Jeannie Forrester and stated it had been an honor and a privilege to have her work for the town. I don't think that's exactly what I said, even though I said honor and privilege. That expressed that the sentiments were mine and that I don't want it to reflect that that was the view of the entire board because I can't speak for the entire board. Or we let it go if you guys.
Yeah, I mean, it says Selectman Justin would like, so it came from you.
If you're okay with that.
I don't think it's a bad thing.
No.
I think it's fine.
You, John?
I'm good.
Plus it shows your soft side.
Yeah.
That's funny.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Selectman Jessman, seconded by Dawson. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I abstain because I wasn't here until 5:50, so.
All those opposed, say nay. So, Selectman Dawson, is that approved? Did you, aye?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, the motion is approved.
Yes, I asked. I guess I didn't yes wide enough.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So moved. Okay, the next one would be the minutes of December 14th, 2023.
We didn't do those. I have notes on them.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of December 14th, 2023.
Jessman, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah. Page one, under public comment, it's past House Road, not Pest Road. And the bottom, under the financial IT director paragraph, almost the last, it says Selectman Constantino asked if the generator for the senior center would also come under these encumbrances. I think there should be a yes, no, maybe. It just says discussion followed. Just me?
No, there's no resolution to the question.
There was no answer?
No, it doesn't state an answer.
Right, I mean, there should be.
You know, I don't, don't know that. I think the answer was yes, but so Tim, did the generator, did the senior center come under the encumbrances that we were talking about?
On the 28th.
On the 14th.
They weren't on the 14th, but on the 28th, the board approved them.
Okay.
But that can stay the way it is?
I would say. There was no resolution. We didn't vote yea or nay.
Just discussed it. Anything else?
I'll amend my motion to as amended.
As amended, and the amendment is to add house between pest and road.
Correct.
Under public comment on the first page. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved? The next one are the minutes of Thursday, November 30th, 2023.
Do you not have that? Yeah, it probably would be.
If you want, Joe, I've got a copy or two. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 30th, 2023.
Jessman, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of November 30th, 2023. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved? And that's it. Caught up on the minutes. Good thing. The next thing we have is Lakes Region Planning Commission, the openings. I didn't know if anybody had read through that and if we had any volunteers for those positions or and if there is, if he has any suggestions or that we could table that until the next meeting and vote on them then.
What is that, TAC and Lakes Region Planning?
Yes.
We, John, we need a replacement for Jeannie as one commissioner. Gene Alden is a commissioner also, but we need two. And Kevin was the alternate on the TAC. And they're asking whether they need an alternate. Leanne is the primary on the Transportation Advisory Committee.
So.
I wonder if with the DPW director coming in, if we hold that as a spot, as the spot, because I think it's, as I looked at historically, it's always been our DPW director who has that spot on the TAC, so just, I wonder if we should hold that for the DPW director, if they need someone to fill in between now and then, then and we'll have to figure that out.
Is the primary.
Yeah.
We're still covered. We are also still covered under the Lakes Region Plan because Jane is, but we should look for somebody else in case Jane can't make it.
Who's the second commissioner?
Was the town administrator.
Who was the other commissioner?
Alternate was.
Jane Alden.
Jane Alden, okay.
I don't think there was an alternate for that.
No, it was just two. I think, I think Jeannie and Jane were the two. I know Jeannie and Jane were the two on that, so.
So, do we have a volunteer? Or we can just table that until next week and everybody see who we, you know, think about it and see who we can put in there.
John, may I say something?
Yeah, sure.
I know the Lakes Region planning people very well. Dave Jefferson and I have worked together for a number of years. If the board wants me to take Jeannie's role, I'm more than happy to do so.
Do you want to do that for now until?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That sounds wonderful.
I've done it, but right now is a bad time for me. So it would be very convenient if you would step in, Paul.
So is that a consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
And John will table the alternate for the TAC.
Yes.
Until we hire a DPW director.
I think so, yeah, that would work, right?
Yeah.
Would that work for the board?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we're moving right along and we're a little bit ahead, so that allows Tim to have a little bit extra time.
Time, time which I will not need. I'm going to be very, very brief.
We'll look at the finance.
Hopefully you'll find out. So, yeah, all the reports are going to be in your finance section of your binders. Just to, I can save you some time. When you look at the finance summary for 2023, we're under the expense budget by just shy of 5% and our revenues are a bit over by almost 3%, a little over 3%. So I'm still anticipating that even with the encumbrances and all end of year transactions, we're still going to be in that $275,000 to $300,000 addition to fund balance for 2023. Very briefly, the 10, we're set to close on the 11th and the return of the COP Tilton, which is the dialysis center deposit, that is in your current AP manifest, so that you're aware of that. And item number two, I do need your approval on A and B, which is two items which exceed the $1,500 authorization. The first one is our annual alert Tilton service. It's $1,575. It's unlimited. And I would ask for that to be approved on consensus.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And then the copier service on our new copier, this is the same as last year. It includes all service calls and toner for the contract year. That's $1,670.
So I'm just going to, for a second, I just want to recognize that Selectman Constantino is present online.
So I'm just asking for consensus to enter into that for the 2024 year for the copier service.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. And then two items, C and D, just like the approval of the board to work on these, one of which is we're currently outside of a janitorial agreement for 2024. The original agreement was proposing 11.3% increase. I'd like to work to negotiate with them on either a change of services or, or rates and with a not to exceed 5.5% increase year to year. That's the first item. The second item is review of revenues in terms of permit fees. It's been over three years since we've updated our permit fees and I want to make sure that we're keeping our revenues for the department in line with the increase in wages and expenses as well as our disposal fees at DPW where our expenses are far outpacing the revenues that we're collecting based on per item issues that we're then having to pay an RRA to dispose of. So I'd like to just work on those those revenue items to be able to make recommendations to the board, not asking for anything else along with that. So C is the janitorial agreement. Asking for consensus with a not to exceed 5.5% increase if I can negotiate with that and bring it back to the board with what, what, you know, the best I can get.
Yes.
Yes. So have we posted that online for the bids?
It was posted, yes. Yep.
And I don't think we've heard any responses.
No. So that's a consensus then?
Yes.
Yes, please.
And then the revenue reviews, once again, just asking for the ability to go and do the work that'd be required to make recommendations to update our permit fees and then also update our disposal fees at DPW and bring that back to the board.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so moving right on to the budget. So the, the main changes to this budget, if you're looking at the, the front page.
I point them on, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Selectman, go ahead. Selectman Constantino, please.
Although, although I'm very much in favor of looking at the fees for this DPW disposal fee, I don't think at this point in time that we should be. I think it, it should be further talked about at the selectmen's meeting, whether or not the Board of Selectmen want to go to one amnesty week or two or the coupon thing. And that's part of the, Tim didn't mention that, that's part of two DPW disposal fees. And I think that that warrants further discussion of the board before he goes ahead and, and makes changes in the fee schedule because that's incorporated in it. And I think that perhaps maybe we could discuss this at next week's, actually spend some time on it next week in the agenda.
So we discuss and Tim mentioned what he's going to do is, is have some, do some research into the costs and the prices and have some suggestions and then we'll put it on the agenda for next week, Paul, if we can remember, if I forget.
He'll do that, yeah.
Does that sound good, Selectman Constantino?
Yes. Yep.
Great. All right. So moving on to the budget. The, the major changes here. You'll see that on the first page that there are a few items that have been voted on by the Board of Selectmen. And then you'll see in the Budget Committee column, there have been a number of items voted on in the Budget Committee column. The, the major changes to this budget since the last iteration that you saw was a revision of the DPW director's salary from the former director's salary line down to $85,000. And that is on page, page seven, which is the first item. And I would also like to remove the, the nomenclature of the technician from that as well, from that line. The next thing was all the encumbrances that the board approved, specifically the line painting machine and then some of the tech services related to the servers, the replacement server installations. I removed some of those from the budget, from the previous budget. And, and then and then I've updated this budget with what the Budget Committee voted on last night. And that includes reducing the, the legal expense line in the admin.
This conference will now be recorded.
That was a fat finger of mine.
Nobody missed anything.
No.
Just a brief glitch there.
Yeah, I gotta watch, I gotta watch this keyboard here. So in any event, the legal general expense line was reduced to $20,000. However, given the fact that we're going to be in a reval year and the we're going to have the potential of additional valuation services from the likes of consultants like Barry Cunningham and others and having to defend our values, it could be, it could be too low of a figure. That's, that's my concern with that. But moving on, they approved the entire town clerk tax collector budget as was presented. They approved the finance budget as presented. They approved the finance long-term debt. They approved the information technology budget. They approved the land use budget with the exception of the change to their change to economic development. They, and then they had asked me to make some other other what-if scenarios, and that was specific to the PD in terms of what the PD budget would look like without the open patrol officer position. So, so I'll be working on that for them for their next, their next meeting. And that is pretty much our budget in a nutshell. So I would recommend, if nothing else, unless there are objections to any of the budgets that have already been voted on, if you want to hold out the administrative budget, the DPW and PD at this point, I'd recommend at least voting on the other smaller budgets. With the understanding we can always come back and make changes. The Budget Committee is, I'm hoping the Budget Committee will be wrapping up their work this month and having their public hearing either the 31st or the very latest February 7th, only because we have to get the town report to the printer by the 15th. So in order to do that, we've got to, you know, have all that business taken care of. So ideally, it would be the 31st. So are there any questions regarding the budget? At this point, this is the same, really the same with the exception of those few items that I mentioned at the onset. This is the same budget you've seen from week to week.
Any questions from the board? That's it, Tim.
You got the list of questions that the Budget Committee had, right?
I do. I do. Would the board like to begin voting tonight or would you want to wait until this next week?
We'd have Pat in the room.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right. And that's all I have for you, unless you have something for me. I would just mention one other minor item. There was a repair of the 2017 F-550. That repair was completed this afternoon and the vendor was kind enough to give us a 10% discount. So the total came in at 5704 for all the work that was listed that had to be taken care of. So it should be back in service for the next storm.
A big storm. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Tim?
Could I take a look at the, what the repairs were? Can you just, not now, but forward it over a copy?
If anybody else is interested.
Absolutely. In fact, you'll have it in your next week's manifest for payment, so you'll see all the details.
Will be on that.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Moving right along. We are about 45 minutes ahead of schedule. The next thing on the agenda was the 549 West Main Street.
John, if the board turns to the department head reports in your binder, you'll find the documents from Leanne relative to this matter. There's three letters, John. The cease and desist, the reply, and the follow-up because no action was taken.
Do we have a report of the current conditions on that property?
That I don't know, I'd have to ask Leanne. This is all I was given, Catherine, so.
Let's use three.
Yeah. Uh I won't skip over you.
These are corrective actions that haven't been done.
That helps me.
You folks all set to get a question from the?
You're on the, you're on the planning board, has this, have they come before the planning board for the site plan?
I have not seen one.
Okay.
I'm going, yes, love, can you stick your?
We can't hear them, John.
Yeah, if you, yeah, sorry about that, yeah.
Or just grab a mic.
Here we go, right here.
This one?
Yeah.
All right, can I just get a copy of what you guys are reading so that way we can respond to what you have to say? So we know exactly what you guys are reading.
It's a letter that was sent September twenty seven, two thousand twenty three, the order to cease and desist, you should have a copy of it.
And then there's two other copies, like two other letters as well, you were saying, there's three separate letters.
One was sent January third.
And there's a reply back from Farmland Real Estate that was dated October fourth, twenty twenty three.
The letter from yesterday.
I mean, I don't mind making a copy, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, can I just have a copy just so as the landlord, we can figure out kind of just where everybody's at?
Are you a property owner?
Yeah, with Kevin.
And you don't have copies of these?
Not the January third one. Thank you.
What is your P O box? Yeah, that's that's the address that they're sent to.
Well, if it's mailed on the third, maybe you just haven't seen it yet.
But they.
Yeah. Yeah, the way mail goes, it could have gone to Manchester before it came back up here. But it's dated.
You have the September twenty seventh.
Catherine's gonna make you a cop. Sure, I suspect you'll get it.
Hang on a second. She'll let her give you a copy of what we got and then take a look and then. Yeah, yeah, and well, the microphone, so that I can, yeah.
John, John, that there was a site plan ordinance done, my notes reflect that, that's all I know.
What's that?
There was a site plan.
Um, there was never a new site plan with the current conditions, it was um a site plan that they're not in performance to
Right.
dating back to two thousand five or something.
Yeah, I think it was five, thank you.
Chairman.
Go ahead, uh, Sluckman Constantino.
My understanding from the last meeting that we had that from the cease and desist, that they were told that they needed to come before the planning board to have um the site plan, what is the status of that right now? My understanding is that they are not, they have not come before the planning board, am I right?
I have not seen anything come through. And I think we have the landowner here.
Yes, my name is Kevin Hutchinson, I'm the property owner for five forty nine West Main Street, Tilton. After the last, I believe it was the September meeting, we did uh contact uh Leanne, we came in, we we reacted to that meeting and the letter that we were sent and we let her know that we have hired and obtained uh David and I believe his name is Kraus. He works for the, you know, does a lot of work with the town and that's who we were recommended to call so that we could get that new site plan updated and uh, you know, stay within compliance. You know, this gentleman is three, four months out. I called him just before I pulled in the driveway and I spoke to his wife and he was supposed to call me back to let us know exactly where we were on his schedule. That's about all I can do, I'm, you know what I mean, I tried to get other people and I I looked for the person that worked and did work with the town and that might know, you know, the properties and that type of stuff instead of find somebody, you know, Southern New Hampshire or something like that. So that's where we're at as of right now. You know, we're trying, I'm trying to do the best I can uh with staying on top of the guys, the guys are doing pretty well, I mean, they they had an extra ten cars there yesterday, they got rid of them. Um, they came from a lot across the street, which the guy never finished his repairs. And they were picked up today and I made sure that I was down there this afternoon to make sure. I'm trying to work with them and they're trying to work with me and we're all trying to work with you folks. I just can't accelerate the process if this gentleman is backed up, you know, he's that's where we're at.
John, if I may have a follow up.
Yeah, Sluckman Constantino, go ahead.
I apologize because I I don't have the cease and desist in front of me. But part of that cease and desist, wasn't there uh limitations placed on until the site plan um was in place that there were, there were limitations on how many vehicles were to be in in the parking lot and um there were to be no uh I want to call them speed cars, but race cars or whatever you call them in the back and there was, they were to be, they were to remove some of the wet uh things in nearby, the wetlands in the in the back that were there were, there were car parts and things like that. And then they were limited to the amount of vehicles that they would have in the parking lot and and I drive by there and I don't see that 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 that's happening. It it irregardless to um Chip Kraus working on, and I understand he's backed up because he's very well uh liked in the area. Backed up for months, I understand that part, but there are, I I believe, correct me if I'm wrong. We did put limitations until that site plan was in place in accepted that these were the conditions you were to be working under. Am I right or wrong, um board?
It was on September twenty seventh.
And what what was?
Right now, the only site plan that's been approved for that property was in what, two thousand and four?
Somewhere around there.
Two thousand and four. And if I remember, that site plan um did not allow any parking off of the um parking lot until it was expanded, there was to be a um not a catch base and no runoff pond, whatever, and then there was supposed to be a catch base and put in the new parking lot area. That would have expanded the use and I believe at that time, U-Haul? Was it something about U-Haul? But at any rate, that was never done, the parking lot was not expanded, so there shouldn't be any parking off of the parking lot. So if there's any, you know, boxes out there, box trailers or vehicles of any kind, they should not be off the parking lot. Hence the reason to come in for a site plan. I mean, I am curious. Are they considering the original survey that was done on the property?
Beyond that?
Nonvalid? Is that why you're being required to survey it? And I and I really don't know, which is why I'm asking the question.
Uh, I believe that one of my previous tenants wanted to sell cars and he put an application in for a dealer's license, which he has retracted that and
But you'd have to site plan for that.
Right, right, he's retracted that, correct.
So according to our zoning ordinance, that upon changing the ownership of business that prior to getting a uh certificate of occupancy, they have to submit a current site plan.
Right, but I'm wondering why the need, because Dave Kraus uses surveyors, you know?
Yeah.
Why would it, and I'm, I don't know. Do they need to have the property re-surveyed is the original?
Just a site plan.
They just need the site plan, so couldn't they use the existing site plan? And I'm asking these questions.
There's been nothing submitted since then.
Right, but I'm saying, rather than waiting for Mr. Krausy, who is very busy because he is very popular, couldn't they use the existing site plan?
Mark it up.
And mark it up.
And we've been, we went through that a couple times already.
And I
Yeah, I was just. I'm not really that familiar with that type of commercial, so um it's I was kind of relying on this gentleman to do and represent our corporation, uh, you know, as the owner, but if there's something we can do, we don't have to do that extra step. I mean.
Leanne's the expert, I guess she's the one to ask, but I was just curious. Trying to get you moving.
No, that'd be awesome, I mean, because I'm sure you don't want to keep having this on and.
So September twenty seventh, you were given ninety days to do that. Did you take any action then?
What I did was I called and I hired this gentleman. That's as far as I've done, except for talking with my tenants and telling them that, you know, I mean, we can't be parked out in the back and we can't, we have to be parked on the paved areas.
You have a copy of the violations, right? Those were continued until last week.
You have a copy of the violations, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. And we were, we were maintaining this, isn't it right?
Yeah. So that ninety day extension expired on twenty nine, that's what happened, that's kind of what you're saying.
Oh, okay, so the ninety days.
We did not get the January third letter, so we're just reading it for the first time right now.
So you have September twenty seventh.
Yep, and then the ninety days.
So is that something we can extend? We're waiting on Mr. Kraus or?
So it looks like on January fourth or third, which you'll be getting that letter. Probably tomorrow, the next day.
That's the one I have in my handbag, yeah.
You have a certain number of days. January third.
I believe one of my tenants, um if I can switch for a minute, um had a couple of questions, I don't know if he can ask a couple of questions, um he said that they have drawn up a
I, I think.
Plan.
Yeah, so I mean, this has been going on since March of last year, when you first occupied
When we first purchased property.
And I know you got U-Haul going there again. So U-Haul's all parked in there and you've also listed online as a U-Haul office. That if you go online, you can look that up and it's registered at that business.
We can't hear him.
How are you guys? So the first thing was um the site plan, the, how you asked, could we just mark up the existing one, so we did and we submitted it um months ago. And I don't know if it was shot down or uh in the confusion of all of it, it wasn't taken, you know, taken a look at by anyone. But we did exactly what you asked already. Um and as far as the U-Hauls, I do continue to repair the U-Hauls and um the online presence of U-Haul that come from the U-Haul generated um regional manager. Nothing works quick, nothing, I tell him fifteen times and I have to get vehicles, U-Haul trailers moved out of there, like have other dispatchers come, but I do not rent any U-Hauls, but I do repair U-Hauls and it's a good business to repair U-Hauls, so if we, even on that site plan that we did or wrote up, I did ask for some U-Haul spaces on there. And but the U-Haul wasn't like a slap in the face to the town, it was existing before all this came about, so it is harder to get that out the universe once it's out out there, but there's no U-Haul sales or only service.
So at the previous time, there was special conditions that were allowed temporarily. And there was a certain number of vehicles that were allowed on that lot, which after that subsequently twice was exceeded. Once when all the race cars were there and the demolition derby cars and then presently I guess was this week that um, again, same thing.
Again, if I may, the the cars on the lot, the number of vehicles on the lot, so we get meetings down on a lot quite often and we get told so many different things, you know, uh but minimum in writing, so the the amount of cars we were, after we were told that we could have the certain amount of cars down there. We um had a meeting at the lot and we were told that we could have cars down here, the 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 number of them wasn't the main focus, it was pulling them all off the pavement. I mean, all off the dirt into the pavement.
I know it was very specific for the number and you came before
It it was.
The planning board and I believe, I'm not exactly quote, but I believe it was thirty total.
I can't remember, thirty nine?
Thirty, yeah.
And and so.
A certain number of registered and unregistered and all that.
Yes, and I mean.
If you look at the the letters that were sent to get you guys into compliance, was that done?
It was the flux fluctuation of cars, I I did not know how many cars on the lot yesterday, I I just did not know. But we don't exceed and accelerate, we do try to fix them, get them out the door. So if there's an influx that does come in and it's customers that's not paying, we do fluctuate the numbers, but it's like, it's not like, oh, we we got twenty cars over, I think somebody mentioned ten um over, like that were moved, but I don't know if that was ten that was over, it was just ten more that was moved. So, you know, it could be five or three over, it could be five or three under, but as far as compliance and we, only thing we thought we were waiting on at this point was to get the land surveyed, so we can get a new site plan in, that's that's where we thought we were at, as far as the number of cars and the cleanliness. We have done so much work and we are, you know, operating in a small space with two different businesses. But we haven't um, we haven't, you know, thrown anybody aside and said, no, we're just not gonna abide by the rules. So at right now, at this time, we simply thought that we were going to deal with the site plan and continue forward.
John.
Uh, Sluckman Constantino?
If I may, uh the minutes of nine fourteen specifically say uh the motion was made to place a cease and desist on five forty nine on all activities at the property except for auto repair until, it doesn't specify thirty, ninety days, it says until the planning board approves a site plan for the entire property. And it was seconded and it was uh passed, it was clarification. The only cars allowed to park there will be cars there for repair at this time. And prior to the motion, it refers back to the original site plan of thirty nine vehicles. I just wanted to bring that forward.
Well, where do we stand, so that you have a letter that was sent out um that you'll you'll be getting, but you have a copy now. So we know where to go now with it. And I would suggest that there's any suggest, any um extensions or anything need that you you know, immediately come in and and do that and also to, and I'm not speaking from the whole board, you can agree, I'm just making comments, suggest that, you know, you do the corrective actions that are on there. Take care of that.
Excuse me?
Does that give you thirty days to do that or how long does it give you to do that?
Well, there's no really time limit, it's, the time limit is you're, you can only do automotive repair. There can no, be no vehicles off the impervious surface until you site plan.
So the corrective action shall be complete within thirty days of this notice.
Well, that's corrective actions, but
Yeah.
For them to go beyond auto repair and they have to site plan.
Yeah.
The corrective act needed to be done. The corrective act needed to be done months ago. So anything that's off the impervious surface needs to be removed from the property.
You need to speak in the microphone, please.
I don't know the answer to that question. I'm just, I was curious as to why you had to have it re-surveyed and why you couldn't use the existing site plan and mark that up. But I, I, like I said, I don't know the answer. Leanne is our expert there.
Okay.
So the existing site plan shows detention ponds, a drain and all that went before DES. It went before, um, the conservation commission, all that. And apparently that's not there.
Well, no, it, the, I was on the planning board in 2004. That, those things were contingent on them expanding the use. And I believe at the time he wanted to rent U-Hauls. So for him to expand the use and park cars beyond what he already had for parking, that's what he needed to do. But.
And how about the drain, the?
The drain was necessary if he expanded the parking.
Well, there's one in the parking lot.
What?
The, the one in the parking lot.
I don't know. Is there one in the existing parking lot?
There was one on that site plan.
I, I thought that was to put in an oil and water separator if he expanded the parking lot. And the runoff went into that retention pond.
It looks like you, you should get to the planning board with a site plan and then go, go that way.
I would talk to Leanne to see exactly what our ordinances require you to do. Like I said, I asked that question because I was just curious.
So I, I think we explained that you need to have a site plan and, yeah.
We can't hear you.
So the site plan that was submitted, the site plan that was submitted in August prior to the September meeting, what happened to that site plan is what the tenants were asking.
That was, I don't believe it was approved or it was withdrawn.
So we just need to come, so we need to come back with a new site plan.
With the proper site plan for exactly what's going on.
Exactly what is going on.
My suggestion is you come in and sit down with Leanne, make an appointment with, with it coming down. Sit down with her, talk with her. Tell her what you'd like to do and ask her what steps are required for you to get there. Like I said, she's the expert. She can, she'll put you on the right course and not the maybe course.
Okay.
But right now for the Board of Selectmen, you need to stay in compliance with the cease and desist orders.
And that's the amount of cars has to be on the parking lot, those kinds of things.
Nothing off the impervious.
So, yeah, it has them listed on that.
That first one, right? Okay. Just want to make sure so they all hear.
Anything else on that? Or you guys, so you know, a good plan of action. And if you're going to go beyond that, get in touch right away. And, you know, not like the last day, but beforehand say, I need another 10 days or something like that. Yeah, you know, and get that. Um, you know, many people sketch these out. Then do it. Um, there's, and she can explain sensitive areas or stuff like that that you might need to, whether it's consult with somebody or, um, ordinances that have to be followed for those. And keep things moving so you guys can keep working, but get, get something on there. There's got to be something in there on, on paper, on file.
No, I appreciate it.
Everybody agree?
That's good.
Yes.
And Pat, you'll go with that, Pat?
Taking the time and coming in?
Yes, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yes, so everybody's consensus, get that, get things going. Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
We are moving right along here. Jinxes. Okay, so the next thing, it's scheduled for 6:45. But we're ahead of schedule. Can just go ahead and proceed. Town administrators report.
Thank you, John. I would refer you to your binders in the back again, where it says department heads report. And you'll see where Leanne has got some documents for you to look at regarding the dialysis center here in Tilton. You've just heard Tim mention about it's going to be in the AP. She's suggested a motion there at the end of the memo to the board. And that's an action item in my report.
I think everybody has that. That would be the one that Keach Nordstrom's went out and checked. The performance monitor from COP Tilton.
That is correct. That is correct.
Everybody has that. And it also includes the inspection report by Keach Nordstrom.
I'll make a motion to release the cash bond for the COP Tilton LLC in reference to Two Business Park Drive, MAP 20, Lot 1-15, in the amount of $38,870 in full.
Jessamyn, second. So we have a motion and a second to release the funds. Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved?
Thank you very much. Thank you. The second action item you'll see there is to do with community power. So in April last year, you had a presentation by the broker, Ryan Paulson of Standard Power. And I'm sure he gave a good synopsis of what community power is all about. I'm, I'm looking at the board and seeing if that was accurate.
Yes.
Um, so I've worked with Ryan in four communities now and handled community power. So I'm pretty familiar with this. And I'm wondering where we are with the board because he's, he's asked if he could come back and give the board a refresher course after town meeting.
I did, I can't remember with our current brokerage deal that we have, how long that contract is for. I'll be honest, i- if our contract goes out a couple more years, yeah, Tim's not here, we'll have to ask Tim. I just wonder if our contract continues out a couple more years. And I think we renewed it last year, if I'm not mistaken. And if it's going to go out a few more years, I, to be honest, I think it would be wasting Ryan's time at this point in time to come in until we're closer to having to look at the next, next power deal that we have. So.
So I, I should, I should refresh, I should look at the, at the electric deal that we have.
Yeah, I would just, I would ask Tim as to how long that contract goes for. And if, and if it's, if it, I, I'm not speaking for everyone, but if it's up in the next year, then I think a presentation about community power would be good. But if it's a couple of years out, I think he'd be better served and his time would probably be better served coming back a little bit closer to when our brokerage deal is up.
Unless he can save us more money than what the deal is.
So, and, and his involves the whole town wide, um, deal as opposed to just town hall. Personally, I'd like to see a lot of information emailed so we can look at it before he comes in for the presentation. Um, and then while we bring this back up, um, towards town meeting, right after town meeting, and we can have the information to go over it, Ryan, also Tim.
Although I haven't spoken to Tim about this, um, I'm, I'm assuming that Standard Power is our electric agreement as the broker or not. I.
I can't remember off the top of my head.
So that all the towns are, the town municipal stuff is on, he, he brokered some really good agreements with that.
Right, yeah. That's right.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Do you think it would save money to the residents and the taxpayers, they think we're all in agreement that
Right.
we'd like to.
Absolutely.
Well, the, the good thing too, John, is if, if contiguous communities also have community power, then there's leverage also with the other companies. It just helps the residents.
Yeah.
Do you want me to read the rest of my report or do you want to just look at it and make comments? What, what did Jeannie normally do?
Um, pretty much went over everything. You went over the items on there.
I'll do that.
Items, so some, a lot of this is FYI.
Yeah. I, I, I would just like to say to the board that Shane Dow and Pete Fife have done an excellent job. They've gone through all of the open items. There were about nine of them that Jeannie left for me. A lot of it was signs, um, things that fences, things like that. And they've, they've given me a status update. One thing is the liner for the ice rink, which I'm going to bring before the board next week because we have two quotes. And there's a lot on the agenda tonight and I didn't have time to do that. They, they've done a very good job. We received two additional applications for the DPW position and two for the town administrator position, which are in the Manila folders that Chairman asked to, to do rather than put them in the binders. I, I, I'm hoping that Selectman Dawson is going to meet with me to discuss the Tilton Island Bridge project at some time.
I am. I will admit to being selfish these past couple of weeks because my grandsons have been um, home on leave from their military assignments. And one was as far away as Okinawa.
Oh, yeah.
I only get to see him for a short time and he's gone for another two years.
Family first, yes. Right, right. Um, I reached out to Brian Colburn of McFarland Johnson, asking him to come before the board, as you remember last, last week, John, to revise, or have another look at his scope and fee for the Caleb Hill Road project. I haven't heard back from him yet, so I will chase him again.
Okay.
I met with Chief Gilman yesterday, who gave me a tour of the facility and we talked about the collective bargaining agreement and other matters of interest. I thought the PD was absolutely top rate. Uh, one of the best I've seen in, in my years of being a municipal government. So I was really, I was really pleased. Um, everybody knows now that the elevator's been repaired. Um, and that shouldn't happen again. I did receive a call from Dave Jeffers of Lakes Region Planning, who advised us that our hazard mitigation plan had been returned by FEMA because there were a number of items in there that they didn't, that they didn't like. They've got some new rules and regulations for 2024. And, and we're going to look, um, we're going to talk to the chief and we're going to talk to Leanne about, about them within the next week or two.
I think there, there's a committee that worked on, Scott, were you one of them?
I was not, Joe.
I was there. As health officer said, I was surprised because there was somebody, I think we hired to help us create this.
Dave Jeffers or LRPC.
But it sounds like the changes, the, you said there were new changes.
There's new, there's new rules set by FEMA to every municipalities has a mitigation plan, yes.
Okay, so I guess we didn't mess up. It was.
Yeah, can't believe the federal government would change things.
I know. What were they thinking of? Really?
So, just so out of, out of pocket that they would do such things.
Right. Right, chief, yes. Yeah. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you and Eva for getting on the elevator so quick and getting that.
Yes, Eva called and said, we can't wait three weeks. This is an emergency. And they came right away. Although she did say it was an emergency with the initial phone call.
It's a double emergency now. So we have some, um, the next thing, we have selectmen's reports. So, um, I am first. Well, good to be going into the new year with no snow on the tail end of what usually hits hard for the, our snow removal and sanding all through November and December. So that's going to be a great help with the budget and great job to the DPW workers for getting all of our stuff up to date, working on that. There were a couple of questions I had also and, and for taking care of the heat down the basement, that blocking off the air. Um, a couple of questions I didn't know, I know we've been asking for about a year now. The telephone pole or utility pole that's right out here. Um, it's about 20% damaged and carved out as well as the guy wires that hold it up are attached to our building. And I didn't know what, if we could check and see what the status is for getting that repaired. I'm concerned that if that does get hit by a plow a couple more times, which it's already pretty well damaged and bent wires.
Replace it, Joe.
And at that point, if it does get hit by a plow and pulls out a section of our mortar and our building. And it was mentioned by our, our insurance agent that they should have, uh, we should be as an additional insured, but they said they didn't have to do that. I, I just want to see what the status is of getting that pole fixed before. It's gone. And the other thing was, is when they do it, to put a light on there because crossing that street and this whole end of school street is unlit with crosswalks and people going back and forth for that. It's a dangerous situation. That's all I have. The next person is Joe.
Uh, the only thing that I have is that I've been looking at that statue downstairs. And, uh, I think it's probably time to move it to its final place. It was only there to be, you know, around town hall a little bit and people could see it when they came in. And they have. It's been a while. And, uh, without the Tilton Historical Society and John Sorrello, that statue and the help of so many others, but John was the, uh, the spearhead. Uh, and I'd like to see it go to the spot at the mansion be put on display.
Are they ready to receive it?
So, uh, talking with John, they would like to have it as long as we provide the proper paperwork and everything. Not to have it, but to have it on display. The, to show that, um, you know, the insurance stuff and all that, and also.
What paperwork does he want us to provide?
So all of our other stuff that we have on loan to them that belongs to the town. There's some type of list that says that this is town of Tilton property and, and so on.
Who's insuring it, them or us?
I'm not sure. I, I'm not sure how that all works out, but all the other items that we have, I believe it's in the same blanket, but we can look at that. And the other issue with it, it's quite heavy and there's two flights of stairs to go up. So is it two flight, they're in one flight?
It's one, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, we, it might take a little bit for the arrangements for, to get somebody to muster, uh, the people to get it moved. But we can let them know and that's my thought.
Well, then I would say just to start the process, get in touch with them, see what it's going to take. See what the, the insurance aspects of it are and who pays for that. Uh, not that I think that it's going to be damaged up there, but it does have a flight of stairs to go up, so.
She's been through a lot.
Yeah. It's a nicely carpeted set of stairs though, so it's beautiful.
Might lose her head. Too late.
Break her arm.
That was a good one, Joe.
Anything else, Joe?
And that's me.
And it's Joe. Next one is Catherine Dawson.
Um, I don't have much, um. The incident, the letter I was talking about on Murphy Lane, those letters have gone out. So if any of you get phone calls, please for you to send them to me. I did put my phone number on there because I sent out seven letters and some of them are going to go, what? But just in case, they should get in touch with somebody, just give them my phone number. Have them call me, I'll tell them what's going on.
Probably just say, no, it's not me.
Well, they deserve kind of an explanation. It was hard to write that letter because I wrote it in general kind of terms. The other thing is, is a number of years ago, I suggested that, and I see our police chief is here, we invest in some pedestrian crossing signs. I did notice that Northfield has installed some of them, they're solar operated and there are lights. It just says pedestrian crossing and the lights flash around it at night. They're really vivid. They're not that expensive. But especially over by the parking lot in Tilton House of Pizza, there's a lot of people that cross there, especially at night. And I don't know what it is about that area, the lighting or whatever, but it's really hard to see them sometimes. And there are other, this parking, yeah, this crosswalk right over here in front of Town Hall, it goes by the monument, that's a long crosswalk. And I just think we could use a couple of them. I think we should look into it.
Public Works.
Black Man Margals.
Yeah, so I think, and when, if those of you who remember when we were talking about the new crosswalk at Riverfront Park, the, the thing I believe that dictates what gets put on this road specifically is the state and the state's regulations for it.
Our main street, we own 10 feet out from the curb. So if we want to put some pedestrian crossing solar signs out on our curb line, that's our property. If you go beyond the railroad tracks, beyond Main Street, yes, that is so, so across from Riverfront Park, that would be 100% New Hampshire DOT domain. But on our main street, we have an unusual situation, so.
Well, the ones you, you bring up have crosswalks in place, but are just hazardous under certain circumstances. There is no crosswalk up there at Riverfront Park.
There is not.
That's wherein the difference lies because there is no crosswalk and so we can't just paint one.
What New Hampshire DOT requires for a crosswalk, I can't even imagine what it is now, but when they were wanting us to put one in over at, yeah, the trail crossing.
Bernice?
I was trying not to say the verbiage.
I know.
But down there.
It'll always be.
Salmon Run.
Salmon Run, thank you. It was upwards of almost $150,000 of what they require. The time you have the signage and everything else that they want for a crosswalk on US Route 3 and 11.
And studies and stuff.
And studies, so you're looking at probably $250,000 for us to put a crosswalk in because they're not going to do it. If we want one, it's at our expense. But those signs, when I looked, this is probably five years ago, range from 15 to 500, yeah, 500, $5,000, so 1,500 to 5,000, depending on, you know, what you want it, right? Some of them you could get combination solar and electric.
I think, I think the other crosswalk to look at too, I don't, couldn't remember if you mentioned this Catherine, is the one crossing the north side of the street at what is Nichols and Dimes Boutique over to Ideal Hall.
Yes.
That one, that one is, that one, as, as bad as the one near Tilton House of Pizza is, that one is worse. That was really, really, really treacherous for anyone and I walked across it last night.
Chief Gilman?
I was fine, I'm here.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I mean, I think every time I go through the main street downtown, that's always been an issue. And the problem is, if you look in like Franklin, let's say City of Franklin, it's so wide, the downtown area. So you have enough time to make those decisions when you see somebody come out. The problem with town, town Tilton is by the time that you are past the vehicles, you are in the travel lane. So, good point, I, I don't know exactly where those solar, I'll have to check those out. It would be just the point of how far and can we see those when all the traffic is there? You know, I've looked at the crosswalk signs in the middle of the road that light up, they actually make some, but it's all, is it, does it come distracting? And then you're looking at the center of the road, now you're looking at a light or you're looking off the side and someone just darts out. I know we had done the LED lights a couple of years and that was great. I think we had driven around with DPW and we talked, they just asked about the light up, that would be perfect to get. Now, what I was wondering is, are those turned up all the way to the brightness? Because that's some of the problem downtown is, is the lighting, you know, how dim it is. And we, I know that we, at those lights, I don't know how bright those are. And I did notice there are a couple of spots that are missing on the pole. And if we had to stagger those, if there were some grants, some money to look into to brighten the downtown, I think that's, that would be, that would be huge, so.
Jessman?
There's a, there's a proposal. There's planning has been done and whatever about putting lights on Main Street to match the lights down at True Green Park.
Yep, which is huge. Night, night, night and day difference through there, night and day.
Oh, no, it definitely is. That lights up the whole thing and it's decorative and it sets a mood and having the rest of, Jules, we had a whole committee that was committed and where should these lights go and so forth. But right now it's just kind of in limbo, COVID came along.
Well, it's, yeah, from our discussions on it, when we were talking about, you know, having that consistent lighting downtown is that when we did remove the trees, we had talked about making sure that we left the electricity there so that in the future we'd have it for that light.
All the condo, everything, sorry.
But I, I think, I think, and I agree with Selectman Dawson, any, any, any extra visibility we can put out, especially at those two crosswalks. You know, and it's not that this one isn't, there's a little bit better lighting here, but, but there's more issues down there. The Nichols and Dimes, the Ideal Hall and the one across T hop is like, any kind of way, if we're able to increase that visibility, I think it's vitally important, so.
Go up and like I said, take a drive by the Northfield Town Hall and you'll see them out there.
Yeah, so the, the lights, Paul, in case you don't know it, each light is individually addressable in the whole town.
Oh, I didn't know, I did not know that.
They're all, it's a mesh system and they all can be turned up and Tim, in his spare time, might be.
In his 25th hour.
He might be able to look and see if those lights are at 100% and they can even do it for certain hours of the day too.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, they dim, yeah.
I didn't.
Pretty cool, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that was Scott.
No, that was.
I still wonder, segueing into Scott a little bit, so are you done Catherine?
I am done, thank you.
Okay, so now we'll segue into Scott.
So I just had one thing and it was, it's sort of a question, because obviously we've had, we've got a few positions that are open. We are receiving applications, et cetera. With those applications come the references that go along. So I, I, I'm just wondering, organizationally as a town, when we're looking at those positions, what are we looking at in terms of policy and procedure for who is going to call those references, et cetera? And my, 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 my worry is, is that if we get too many cooks in the kitchen, but they aren't communicating about who's making those phone calls, that sometimes you can have candidates be turned off by that. It's kind of like, they don't know what they're doing. So that just becomes my question on, you know, I, I know that we have department heads when you have, you know, folks who are going to work for them, maybe make those phone calls. So just wondering, policy, procedure, who should be making the phone calls to references or contacting them?
I thought we asked Paul to do that.
I've been checking references for the boards. And when they aren't on the application, I go back by email and I say, can I please give me three, at least three professional references? And the most recent one that you'll see in your packet has done that and I'm making those calls.
Thank you. And that's it for me.
And that's it. So next we have Pat.
Selectman Constantino.
Yeah, and is Pat Constantino's selectman.
I have, I have a couple of items. One is the candidacy for elected public office is January 24th to February 2nd. And there are two positions open for the selectmen, three positions open for Budget Committee, one of which is, no, and in addition, one also for Lockmir Representative. There is a position open for trustee of trust funds, this is a three-year term. There's supervisor of the checklist, which is a six-year term. Sewer Commissioner, three-year term and the moderator. So that is January 24th to the February, the close of the day on February 2nd. Five, oh, 5:00 PM, they're open until 5:00 PM just for that, I'm sorry, I was corrected by Kim. Also.
Do you want to go over the procedure for that, Pat? How they would go about doing that?
They have to go into Kim and, and ask for papers to announce their intent for candidacy. And they must be a registered voter. In Tilton. Okay, next is we need to, a shout out to all of the department heads, which I'm sure the town administrator has already asked for the town report. So does anybody else want to do the selectmen's report? For the town report this year?
No. Pat, we, we, I'll be grateful if you would do that for us as chair.
I could live with that. I think that should be the chair's responsibility, actually.
I was hoping that that was, somebody was going to subjugate the authority to someone else, but okay.
We all did.
So be it, all right, so.
I can help out too, if, you know, bring some stuff past me. If we have any suggestions, we can send it to you too and well.
All right, just remember comma, if it's chairman's responsibility, just remember comma next year. The other thing is the town report, dedication of the town report. Do you got your little sticky notes there and also the in memoriam? Got little sticky notes? And with that said, I'm going to close and I'm on my way because you're going to have a non-public and I'll be there.
So I, I think what we'll do is we'll look at and then next week, we can decide who will.
Yeah, I think.
And the dedication.
Once you decide, we need to also make sure that we have the writing, picture and all of that that goes along with it. So, you know, make sure that we have plenty of time to do that, okay? And keep the notes there with you so I can make sure I'll see them in a second. Talk to you later.
Oh, here, Joe.
So I put one on here and I believe this is allow because it doesn't have to necessarily be two people that are not.
Could be, but that's an interesting concept.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, people that have done a lot in the last couple of years to, to.
Non-resident.
We've done that before.
He doesn't live in town?
No, he doesn't.
But I, I think, I believe we've done that before.
I can't, he's a guy from Northfield.
That is, to a non-resident?
Does he live in Northfield?
Dennis? Yeah. I think Dennis.
He's from a different county.
I, I think.
I'm a big yes on this one.
I could, I could go with that.
So once Pat's here and we can pass some more notes around.
Did he die? This past year, right?
Yeah. Your before?
I don't recall.
Which one's the one for?
All of these are the dedications, the, I didn't put down the dedication.
So. Yes, I save all these notes?
Yeah.
This is Mr. Nobody.
And we'll talk about it.
That's Joe, he wrote in purple ink on that.
That's right, invisible man.
Oh, you always start two names.
Was yours for the in memoriam or was it?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. Ow, ow.
Pretty nice.
So we've got some suggestions and we'll, we'll bring it up at the next meeting and I could probably share these with Pat.
Sure, absolutely.
Let's see, what else we got? So.
That's it, non-public, cover it up.
Anything, anybody online, I see a zero.
D.
That's a D.
Or D. We're going to be going into non-public if anybody that is out there online or presently there's nobody in the audience would like to say anything or speak up, please do so as soon as possible. I don't see anybody. Anything else from anybody here on the board?
John, can I ask a question?
Sure.
By email, we sent the two department reports. Do you comment on those or do you look at them? We had, we had one from Chief Gilman and also from Leanne.
Unless I had a question.
Yeah.
I had a question about them because they're an FYI. Unless there's something that needs to be acted on.
But thank you, Joe.
Yeah, the only thing that with the 549 Main Street, that perhaps you can put a timeline together for us so we can get a good understanding of, you know, what happened on what dates.
That's a good idea, yes.
Well, it would be nice to have had a report of the current conditions on that property.
I think that's.
For this evening.
Yeah, it was, I think that's on the top of that letter from, that, that's, I mean, I don't, I, the other thing, here's a question on that, on that letter is, do they have 30 days from the date of the letter or the date of when they receive it? I mean.
So a big question for.
Well, it's usually, it's usually from the date of the letter.
Okay, yeah, yeah, got it.
And then if there's something wrong with the mail or they receive it 10 days later, they'll ask for an extension.
They go to postmarks.
Yes, that's correct.
I think that's it. There's no questions from the public, so I'm going to make a motion that we go into non-public pursuant to RSA 91A colon 3 to B, and I don't have my cheat sheet.
That's hiring, John.
It's hiring.
It's all it is, hiring of a, yeah.
Typically, we read the whole thing, is necessary to read the, yeah. I don't have my cheat sheet.
Oh, I do, bring it on.
Okay. So we're going to non-public per RSA 91A colon 3, per 2B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. We have a motion in a second, so that's a roll call vote.
Ruggles, yes?
Dawson, yes.
Scanlon, yes?
Jessman, yes.
Jessman said yes. And I don't see Constantino online.
No, she said she was going to go offline because it wasn't, she wasn't in a space where she could do it.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, so we're going to non-public now, so move.
Isn't she on her way here?
Hang on a second.
Not to usurp your, I'm the assistant to the technology.
Is it pause? Joe did that for years.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you.
On your agenda is new business.
Okay. So are we back on? Okay. So the motion to leave non-public and return to public.
I made the motion. Yep. Catherine seconded. We gotta do motion to seal the minutes.
Okay.
Well, don't we do, we need to seal the minutes first, then make a motion on that.
Yeah. And.
Okay, I'm getting okay at this.
Okay. So, so we want to make a motion to seal the minutes and.
Well, you have the form there. Why don't you do it once?
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to seal the minutes. And because it's determined that divulgence of the information would. Yeah, excuse me, folks. I, I just need a little coaching if you're watching this. We're using a new form which I'll explain in a minute. Which is other. It's.
So is there anything in the actual minutes that you wrote that would adversely affect the reputation of a non?
No. No, it's just that information should not be released as yet. It's only temporarily, it will be released. So it has to do with hiring and so what would the reason be?
Personnel.
Okay. Other than just go for personnel. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. So the, the only thing, let me just explain. So I'll make the motion to continue and use, to use these forms for the non-public minutes that will be taken by our appointed secretary at that meeting during the non-public. It's my motion.
That's what we made that motion. Second.
No, not that one.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So thanks. So there is the form. And so what we're gonna do is I will turn this over to the administrator. Any new business come before the Board of Selectmen at this time? I don't hear any except for Joe has something.
Yeah, I got this one thing, John. Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Second.
Thank you.